The Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, this meeting is now in session Thursday, July 14th, 2022. This meeting is a virtual meeting allowed by Chapter 22 of the Act. Well, no, I'm going to skip that for today. We have a one-day reprieve, a two-day reprieve. So we are continuing to meet virtual, and this will be the last day until we receive direction from our legislature or your communities. But Tom and I, we can talk about this, you know, tomorrow, whatever. So I'm not going to go into all those rules in regards to having virtual meetings. I think we're ready to begin. So the first item A is a call to order.
That's it.
What you have just done, John.
You're right.
Now we need to do the roll call.
Right, roll call, did that last minute too?
All right.
Roll call, please.
Thank you. Adams.
Duval, alternate.
Alfred. Beckett.
Sheila, could I interrupt you a minute?
Sure.
We do have some new delegates, and I think we want to explain a little bit the process of what we're doing here.
All right, I am simply taking the role. When I call the name of your town or city, would you give me your name and whether you're a delegate or an alternate, please?
And the reason that Sheila is doing that is she is the clerk of the BRPC right now.
That's my job. Okay, Alfred Beckett. Cheshire.
Trob, delegate.
Thank you. Clarksburg. Dalton. Great Barrington.
Dick, alternate.
Hancock. Lanesboro.
Barb Davis Hassan, delegate.
Thank you. Mount Washington. New Ashford. New Marlborough.
Jonathan James, delegate.
Thank you. North Adams.
Oh, yeah, man, I like it.
Otis. Peru.
Oh, delegate.
Thank you. Mitchfield, Irvin, delegate. Richmond. Sandersfield. Sheffield.
Barry Holley, delegate. Renee Wood, alternate.
Thank you. Stockbridge.
Nancy Socia for Planning Board, delegate.
Thank you.
Christine.
I'm sorry. Would you repeat? Whoops. So Stockbridge, is Christine here?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you, I didn't hear you. Tearingham.
Amanda Hamilton, delegate.
Thank you. West Stockbridge. Williamstown.
Ken Cutner, delegate.
Roger Bolton, alternate.
Thank you. And Windsor.
Douglas McNally, delegate.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Tom, has anyone else joined us that is not a member of the BRPC?
Well, we have PCTV who is on, and let me look around.
Mark. Mark Malloy.
Oh, yeah, Mark Malloy from our staff, and Meg Arvin from our staff is on as well.
Okay, thanks. Next is the approval of minutes of May 19th, 2022. There are motions.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Second.
Okay. Now, this is, Tom, this is also a roll call, right?
Yes, this is still a roll call vote.
We still do roll calls, okay. We need a roll call vote.
I'll continue in the same order that Sheila did, so we do it by town, and just the delegates' names will be called, or the alternate if the delegate's not present. John Duval.
Aye.
Peter Trob.
Yes.
Malcolm Fick.
Yes.
Barbara Davis Hassan.
Abstain wasn't present.
Laura was with us. Well, she's here. Sorry, let's find. Jonathan James.
Abstain was not present.
Kyle Hanlon.
Yes.
Sam Hupped.
Abstain.
Sheila Irvin.
Yes.
Sorry, Hoy.
Yes.
Nancy Socia.
Abstain.
Amanda Hamilton.
Yes.
Kenneth Cutner.
Abstain, not present.
Doug McNally.
Okay, that's everyone. The motion passes. Next on the agenda is comments from the public. If there's anyone that has called in who would like to make a comment, getting some feedback here, or adjust the commission, they may do so with anything that's not on the season's agenda, your only request is that you state your name. Anyone from the public that has comments. Hearing none, moving on to delegate and alternate issues. Any delegate or alternate who has an issue they would like to bring up that's not on the agenda, that would be possibly added to the next agenda, or if they have any questions you may have. Okay, hearing none. Next is the Executive Committee Actions. The Executive Committee met on June 2nd, and the actions taken are part of the packet this evening. This is just for information, right, Tom?
That's correct, or if anybody had any questions that they want further explanation on.
Any questions in regards to the Executive Committee's June 2nd meeting and the actions Okay. Next, we have the election of BRPC officers for FY 2023. So, Tom, I hand this over to you.
Okay, sure, or the Commission Development Committee can do that if they want. I'm more than glad to do it. So, our bylaws. Now, we're going to have to mute you there, buddy.
Oh, man.
Is that some kind of a sign?
No, I forgot it was open.
So our bylaws require that we have an election of officers after the first meeting, the first meeting after July 1st. And the Commission Development Committee established a nominating committee, which is part of the bylaws as well, and that nominating committee made a recommendation that the officers for FY 23 be Chair John Duval, the Adams delegate, Vice Chair Malcolm Fick, the Great Barrington alternate, and the clerk Sheila Irvin, the Pittsfield delegate, and for Treasurer Buck Donovan, the lead delegate. Our bylaws also allow for nominations from the floor, so I think, Mr. Chair, you're going to have to ask if there are any nominations from the floor.
Okay, many nominations from the floor for any of these officers.
Move to close the nominations.
Motion to close nominations, we have a second.
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 We have a second. Roll call vote.
John Duval.
Yes.
Peter Trob.
Yes.
Malcolm Fick.
Yes.
Barbara Davis Hassan.
Barb Davis Hassan, yes.
Yes. Laura Mency. Jonathan James.
Yes.
Kyle Hanlon.
Yes.
Sam Hupped.
Yes.
Sheila Irvin.
Yes.
Sarah Satterthwaite. Just joined us from Savoy. Sorry, Hoy.
Yes.
Nancy Socia.
Yes.
Amanda Hamilton.
Yes.
Kenneth Cutner.
Yes.
Douglas McNally.
Yes. I move to approve the slate.
A motion to approve the slate of officers for fiscal year 2023. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion?
Somebody's got to mute.
Please. Hearing none, it's a roll call vote.
John Duval.
Yes.
Peter Trob.
Yes.
Malcolm Fick.
Yes.
Barb Davis Hassan.
Yes.
Laura Mency.
Yes.
Jonathan James.
Yes.
Kyle Hanlon.
Yes.
Sam Hupped.
Yes.
Sheila Irvin.
Yes.
Sarah Satterthwaite. Sorry, Hoy.
Sorry, Hoy, yes.
Nancy Socia.
Yes.
Amanda Hamilton.
Yes.
Kenneth Cutner.
Yes.
Douglas McNally.
Okay, I want to thank everyone, the Vice Chair, the Clerk, and the Treasurer for, does somebody please mute? There's echoes, but thank everyone for volunteering their time, and the officers, a lot of time is required to be in these positions, and I appreciate everything you do and the help that you provide, and the work that you do with Tom and his team. Next, and also the nominating committee for the work that you have done, thank you. Thank everyone for the support. Next, the endorsement of committee chairs and at-large executive committee member appointments for fiscal year 2023. Tom, do you want to take this one too, or you work this one?
Sure, and maybe I took it, I should have changed the agenda a little bit before, so we had a description of what these committees were, but we'll get into it a little later. But the BRPC does have several standing committees and some other committees that work with us, and the bylaws require that the commission approve these committee chairs as well as at-large executive committee members as well. So for the various committee chairs, the Chair makes these recommendations that need to be ratified by the full commission. So for the Environmental Review Committee, Roger Bolton has been proposed. The Commission Development Committee Chair Renee Wood has been proposed. Regional Issues Committee, CJ Haas as the Chair. The Berkshire Brownfields Committee, Sheila Irvin as Chair. Berkshire Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Committee, Kyle Handlin as Chair. And for at-large members of the Executive Committee, Kyle Handlin and Sam Hupped.
Is there a motion to approve?
Doug, you were muted, I'm sorry.
I make a motion to approve the chairs and at-large as listed.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Now, you know, some of these, many of these names seem familiar, but these individuals do put in tremendous amount of work in the meetings that I call into, a lot of them during the day, and takes a lot of preparation, working with BRPC liaisons to pull together all the information and be able to run a solid meeting, to get things progressed. And it is also site visits, and there's a lot to do with these chairs, and I'm very pleased that the majority, if not all, have been chairs in the past and decided to return another year. So thank you for accepting that. And again, if there's those, you know, for the next year, please talk to Tom and myself that you're interested in getting more involved, and I'm sure we can find a lot for you to do. So, but again, thank all, I thank all of these individuals for continuing to be chairs for these committees, you do a great job. Any other discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
You're muted, Kate.
John Duval.
Yes.
Peter Trob.
Yes.
Malcolm Fick.
Yes.
Barb Davis Hassan.
Yes.
Laura Mency.
Yes.
Jonathan James.
Yes.
Did we get you, Kyle?
Yes.
Thanks. Sam Hupped.
Yes.
Sheila Irvin.
Yes.
Sarah Satterthwaite. Sheila. Sorry, Hoy.
Yes.
Nancy Socia.
Yes.
Amanda Hamilton.
Yes.
Kenneth Cutner.
Yes.
Douglas McNally.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Next, as we continue to get through these yearly administrative items, Tom, I'm going to stay with you as we go through these committee approvals, in case you have some history you'd like to add, so if you wouldn't mind continuing on.
No, I'll be glad to, again, and sorry for all this administrative work, but this is somewhat of a reorganization meeting for our new fiscal year, which started in July 1st, so we also have various standing bodies that are not necessarily under the jurisdiction of BRPC, and it's a little bit, and we also, the commission needs to ratify those appointments as well. So the Berkshire Metropolitan Planning Organization is the transportation planning organization for Berkshire County that makes a lot of the recommendations for funding decisions for some of the federal roads. And so by our bylaws, John Duval as the Chair of the Commission is the representative of that, but we also like to have some alternates in case John, who does have another job, is not available to attend the MPO. So we'd like to have Sam Hupped and Kyle Handlin be recognized as the alternates there. And we have two other groups that we have representatives to, the Westfield River Wild and Scenic Advisory Committee and the Mohawk Trail Woodlands Partnership Board. And for the Westfield River Wild and Scenic Advisory Committee, I don't know if everyone knows that the parts of the Westfield River have been nominated as a, and not actually nominated, but accepted, as a federal wild and scenic river, that it offers some types of protections to it, and there is an advisory committee that does various projects related to that status. Now, Marie Raftery had been the representative, and I have not been able to confirm that she wants to continue on, so I don't think we can act on that tonight unless we know that she's wanting to do that. But, and then the other committee that we have is the Mohawk Trail Woodlands Partnership Board, and this is a relatively new initiative for North Berkshire County in particular that is really trying to deal with sustainable forestry practices, economic development from natural resource-based assets, as well as community sustainability. And Kyle Handlin had been the BRPC representative to that body, but Kyle has asked to kind of step back, and so that's an open opportunity for someone from BRPC, if anyone is interested in that. If anyone is interested, they can certainly contact me, and I can provide a lot more information, but, so we won't be able to fill that position tonight either, John.
Okay, let's first, we'll get the Berkshire MPO alternate and alternate two, get that going first, so is there a motion for the alternate and alternate two, well, alternate Sam Hupped and alternate two Kyle Handlin, North Adams, is there a motion to approve the Berkshire MPO?
Don't move, Douglas McNally, winter.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
And we have a second, any discussion? This is a roll call vote.
John Duval.
Yes.
Peter Trob.
Yes.
Malcolm Fick.
Yes.
Barb Davis Hassan.
Yes.
Laura Mency.
Yes.
Jonathan James.
Yes.
Kyle Hanlon.
Yes.
Sam Hupped.
Yes.
Sheila Irvin.
Yes.
Sorry, Hoy.
Yes.
Nancy Socia.
Yes.
Amanda Hamilton.
Yes.
Kenneth Cutner.
Yes.
Doug McNally.
Yes.
Okay, motion approves. The next one is the Westfield River Wild and Scenic Advisory Committee, so Marie hasn't called in town tonight?
No, and I think we, I think we should pass on both of these for tonight, and we'll have to deal with them at the, when we get a candidate there.
So anyone that's, that is interested, what's your requirement, Tom, to be, is there any requirement to be on either of these two committees?
Pretty much to have an interest and to be willing to show up and participate. The Westfield River Wild and Scenic Committee, I mean, they have done activities like cleanups and educational activities and those types of items. With the Mohawk Trail Woodlands Partnership Board, Kyle, do you want to speak to that a little bit?
Well, it's just getting underway, they're still waiting for some federal legislation to approve it, but there's a lot, a lot of work that still needs to be done in time. If nobody steps up, I'll be happy to do it for another year.
Okay, great.
Tom, this is Doug, there are not too many communities in Berkshire County that are active in the Westfield River, and Windsor is one that is very active, we have a branch there, and I would be willing to serve on that if she does not want to continue, because I'm involved with it in any case.
Okay, that's great.
If you don't get, if she, if she wants to continue, fine, but if she declines, I would be willing to step in.
Okay, that's terrific, Doug, thank you. I just, it was just a matter of not connecting with her, whether she's on vacation or whatever.
I don't want to push her aside at all, she's been very active and very effective, but if for some reason she does not want to, and we want to have a representative, I'd be willing to step in.
Okay, great.
Okay, so we'll, no action on those final two, please contact Tom with any additional interest, and we'll take care of this the next meeting. Moving on to item eight, the authorization of the Executive Committee to act on behalf of the commission, Tom?
Yes, this is, again, is a requirement of our bylaws that we have to authorize the Executive Committee to take certain actions on the full commission's behalf. Those are, were contained in the material, and it's things like, you know, authorizing funds, borrowing, personnel policies, those, some of those more administrative activities that we do, the Executive Committee meets on a monthly basis, the full commission every two months, and so this is some of the business activities that have to go on as part of the agency. So there is an authorization requirement, this material is in your packet, and it is something that we can't act on tonight, but you have to actually send in a form or an email, or do a Survey Monkey response. So we try to make it as easy as possible for you, and we do need to get 22 affirmative votes, so that's 22 out of the 32. If there are some, if there are questions about, you know, what you're authorizing the Executive Committee to do, I'll be glad to go through that in greater detail. So this, there's no action tonight, John, on this, but just to really push, you know, the delegates to act on this so that by the time we have our September, our proposed September meeting for the Executive Committee, we can take these actions. And I will warn those who are not prompt on this, that you will be getting nagged by our very personable administrative person, Kate.
So, Tom, whoever votes, does it have to be a delegate, it can't be an alternate?
A delegate, unless the community has not appointed a delegate, then the alternate delegate can do that.
Okay. And we have information how to contact all of the delegates of all of our communities?
Oh, the delegates get all of this stuff, John, on a regular basis.
Okay, so is there any other discussion on that item? We'll be hearing from Tom soon.
Well, it was also in the mailing too, so you can just respond there as well.
Very easy to do, it's very quick and easy.
Thank you for that plug.
The survey was simple.
Good, good to hear. Okay, next we have, Tom, you want to go over the recruitment to BRPC committees?
Sure, I'd be glad to do that. So, you know, a lot of the work of BRPC is done by staff, there's two elements to BRPC, the, you know, the staff and the policy folks, the delegates and the alternates, and really the role of the, you folks, delegates and alternates, is to guide staff on a lot of activities, and we do that through various committees. Some of the committees that we have are prescribed by the bylaws, such as the Executive Committee, but we do have other committees that do a lot of work, actually, for Berkshire County. The Environmental Review Committee is really responsible for providing advisory comments on various large-scale development projects, primarily through MEPA, which is the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act, and when a development project or proposal meets a certain threshold, they have to file with MEPA either an environmental notification form or various other documents, and our Environmental Review Committee does, you know, really review these proposals, which sometimes can be hundreds of pages, and come up with some recommendations about how to get good development projects in Berkshire County. The Commission Development Committee is really primarily responsible for education, membership, and, you know, periodic review of the overall performance of the commission. One of their key tasks is to establish a nominating committee, which they did earlier this year, for officers and of the commission. Another committee is the Finance Committee, who oversees our on a policy level, our financial operations and, you know, making sure that we're following good, sound financial practices. Another standing committee is the Regional Issues Committee, which is really more of a deliberative body in that if there are issues and it can be proposed regulations, it could be a topic that a lot of our communities have to deal with. This committee will try to bring in expertise and have a more in-depth discussion about a topic than maybe we can have at a commission meeting or an executive committee meeting. So that one, most recently, we've been this Regional Issues Committee has been dealing with a lot of the energy related changes, regulations that have the smart code, if you may have heard about that, that is being proposed. And we do have a couple of new plans coming up related to reducing our fossil fuel use and emissions that the Regional Issues Committee will be addressing or dealing with. What the work of that committee then gets forwarded either to the executive committee or the full commission for the actual policy recommendations. So it's more of an advisory type committee. And we also have two special committees that are related more to some of the programmatic areas that we work in. So we have as as the staff, we have a Economic Development Planning Program. And we now Berkshire County has been recognized as an Economic Development District with the Federal EDA Economic Development Administration. And as a requirement of that, there's a process to develop and and monitor an overall economic development strategy. So you'll hear the acronym CEDS, which stands for Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, which really is the document that it contains, you know, an analysis of our key economic trends, changes, needs, and then identify some of the key development, economic development priorities that we want to have in the county. And hopefully that will lead to getting various grants or funding sources that are funding to help advance and implement those economic development projects. And the other special committee that we have is the Berkshire Brownfields Program Committee. And this committee provides advice on which type of brownfield programs would get funding either through what's called an assessment grant, which really tries to identify and quantify, identify the contamination of a site and quantify quantify the magnitude of its extent. And the other item is to provide funding through the revolving loan fund that Berkshire Regional Planning Commission has. Recently, we received a $2.5 million revolving loan fund from the Environmental Protection Agency. And this can go towards helping projects get cleaned up, actually. So this committee works both on the assessment to try to figure out what the contamination is and then help provide some funding to clean those up. So again, these are open. Anybody who's interested, they can, you know, shoot me an email or a phone call. And, you know, they they have various schedules. I'd be glad to go into greater detail on, you know, schedules or the amount of work that would be required.
Hey, thanks, Tom. If you're able to do this and able to support one of these committees, we're always looking for volunteers. This is where all of the interesting information, in my opinion, is shared and discussed. And this is really the interesting part of being a member of the BRPC is, at least for me anyways, what I call it through these meetings and listen in and the knowledge that the BRPC staff has and the the committee chairs, then, you know, we have a lot of experience and great discussions. And you get a good understanding of what's happening, what, you know, for next, for the future, our planning and and other other committees. But if you have the opportunity to be able to have time to do this, definitely contact Tom. These really are the interesting part, in my opinion, of being a member of the BRPC. Any other discussion on these committees? Okay, next it is CUSAC Award time, Tom.
Yeah, so annually, we've been mostly recognizing, you know, some one or some initiative that has made a contribution to planning in Berkshire County. And it's an open nomination process. And the nomination form also is in your packet. It really is, you know, if you haven't read the little background on Charles Cusack's, you know, the old timers know, you know, who Charles was. And if you're really an old timer, you may have worked with Charles because he was, you know, he helped a lot of the communities adopt zoning when they first adopted it. But it's really it's an interesting story. And in his name, we try to provide an award to someone who's kind of continued that legacy. And this is an open, you know, nomination process. We typically announce these at the annual meeting, which will be the last week of September. And so if you have some thoughts, send them in. It doesn't have to be extensive. We'd like to get these in by August 4th, if you have something. So hope to get some good nominations.
Are there any questions in regards to this award? Okay. I look forward to seeing some nominations. Next is the Berkshire Benchmarks and Indicators. I believe we have Mark Loy here, Tom.
Yeah, so this is what I think is a really good product that Mark has been working on over the last year and a half or so, Mark, and and still somewhat of a work in progress on some of these items. But the Berkshire Benchmarks has been around for a number of years and primarily as a data repository. So if you haven't looked at the benchmarks, you really should because it is a one stop shop for all the data or most of the data that you're ever going to need in a community. And Mark revamped that this past year and also added another element besides data, our indicators, which we intend to track over time to kind of measure change in Berkshire County. But I'm going to pass it off to Mark and take it away.
Thank you, Tom. Let me just share my screen. All right, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yes. Evening, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Mark Loy. I'm the TIS Data Manager here at BRPC and the Project Manager for Berkshire Benchmarks. I'm going to give you some brief background on benchmarks, a brief review of the State of the County Report, and then demonstrate the new Berkshire Benchmarks website. So in 2019, and it's been more than a year and a half, the Berkshire Leadership Impact Council decided to use indicators to better inform their work. They enlisted BRPC to develop these indicators for the region. The goal of Berkshire Benchmarks is to work with the community to understand our priorities, help inform the region on how we are doing. Sorry about that. Berkshire Benchmarks does this by enhancing the region's access to quality data and analysis. So as Tom said, we have data and we have indicators. I'll be going through those a little bit in more detail. So in 2020, right as the pandemic really hit, we started to work on revamping Berkshire Benchmarks and to develop these indicators. After a lot of work, we came up with over 300 potential indicators that could be used by the region. This is obviously too many for us to keep track of, and it was too many for one group to review. So we put them into eight sectors: economy, education, environment, government, health, housing, social environment, transportation. And then we also added a general demographic sector for some of the common data points that we're all interested in, but don't really fall in one of the other categories. So the sectors met throughout 2020, 21, and we narrowed that list down to 82 indicators. And we designated 32 of them as key indicators. And so we're going to see more about those key indicators in a few minutes. We realized very early in the process that quantitative data does not provide all the answers for a region. So we decided to do a survey of residents that we would repeat every three to five years. This survey was distributed in January. And we had over 3,000 responses, fewer than we hoped for. But the respondents were representative of the county population geographically, by age, race, ethnicity, income. So we feel it's relatively representative of the county. I'm not going to discuss the survey too much. But you can find the whole survey results online at Berkshire Benchmarks. I'll point that out when we update them on the website. So I'm going to come into the State of the County Report. So the report was released in May. We had a big event at the Berkshire Innovation Center, had around 60, 70 people there. This report focuses on presenting the key indicators and trends and reviewing the data. We have drawn some conclusions across across the indicators and survey responses. The report does not provide solutions. It identifies our successes and challenges. It's really up to you and the communities to figure out how we can work, how we can go about improving things. Not everyone is going to agree with all these successes and challenges, but what the indicators show, think of this as a baseline report. And as we work together as a region over the next few years, we can monitor how the data changes. In a few years, we'll be reconvening the sectors to review the latest data, see if any adjustments to these indicators need to be made. I would ask that as you listen to me over the next 15 minutes or so and as you read the actual State of the County Report, consider how the data presented impacts you and your community and what you can do to help move the needle on from these items. So some key takeaways in reviewing those 82 indicators and 32 key indicators and the survey results, there's some pretty big takeaways that we could pull out of it. I'm going to go through these in more detail. But in summary, our region has seen numerous successes over the last few years. These successes include an increase in income, a decrease in poverty and unemployment, healthier environment, increased stability of the young adult population. And as a region, we need to celebrate those successes. A lot of people and organizations have contributed to the positive developments with with those efforts. And we need to continue to contribute and work on those things to make sure we continue to improve those. But we do have challenges. We know our children struggled academically during the pandemic. Housing is getting less affordable to many low and middle income residents. Mental health challenges are getting worse. There's an increase in reports of families in distress. And then many of the indicators show disparities in the county when looking at the data by race and ethnicity. So we really need to work together to try and figure out how to solve some of these problems. So now we're going to enter these actual findings. I'm going to go through these pretty quick. There's a lot to cover. But all of this data is available online. It is available in the report and, you know, within the Berkshire Benchmarks website. So within the economy sector, the first takeaway is the increase in income. Berkshire County has seen an increase in median household income is now at $62,166, a 27% increase since 2010. The state and nation continue to be above the county, so we have some catching up to do, but we are improving. Our incomes were relatively stable through 2015, but have since started going up. And so that's good news for the region. The unemployment rate dropped from 2010 to 2019. And then we saw the COVID unemployment spike in 2020. The region's rate in 2020 was 9.1%, has subsequently come down to 6.5% in 2021, which is annual rate. We know that March 2020 rates have continued to drop to 4.9, further dropping in April down to, I think, around four and a half. We're still above the 2019 rate of 3.7, but we're rapidly approaching it. Hopefully, by the end of the year, we will reach it. This shows that our jobs have mostly rebounded since the pandemic started, which is great news. In the education sector, we know the pandemic impacted our children academically. Among the chosen indicators, the team chose the Next Gen M-CAS third grade English and eighth grade math assessments. For third grade English, we saw a decline in percentage of third grade students who scored proficient or advanced in English from 2019 to 2021, from 55% down to 48%, and the county is below the state. There was no test in 2020, so this may have been one year deviation. We're going to have to wait and see. However, when we look at math, we see something a little bit different. Berkshire County has seen a significant decline in the percentage of students who score proficient or advanced in eighth grade math. Since 2018, our students have dropped from 39% proficient and in advanced to 18%, over a 50% decrease. The county is also significantly below the state. Important to acknowledge that some school districts are doing good and some are not. But as a larger region, we are struggling academically. 1023 tests were taken April, May, so in a couple of months, we'll be getting those results and we'll see how the student results or performance improved. Within the environment sector, we have seen a significant increase in air quality. We're measuring air quality as the annual average ambient concentrations of particulate matter at 2.5 micrograms per cubic meter. It's a lot to take in there, but mostly this is important because it's the particulate matter that often causes respiratory problems. We have seen a decrease from 13.3 down to six micrograms per cubic meter. So over a 50% decrease in just under 20 years. So again, something really good news for our air quality. We have also been protecting more land. Almost 40% of the land in Berkshire County is now protected. We have also seen significant increases in the percentage of endangered species in the habitat that is protected. In the government sector, something many of you may be involved with, property taxes have continued to go up in our greater portion of municipal budgets. In 2003, the county percentage of revenue from local property taxes was just over 50%, but has now increased to almost 60%. Meanwhile, the percentage of revenue from the state has declined from 27% to 20.8% over that same time. So we're relying more on local property taxes, less on the state. This doesn't mean we're getting less money from the state. Just a smaller portion of our overall budget is coming from the state. In the health sector, we are seeing several indicators pointing to a worsening of mental health. The number of days that people reported being mentally unhealthy in the last 30 days has been steadily rising since 2013, increasing from 3.4 days to five days, an increase of 1.6 days every 30 days. So really, five days out of 30, people are mentally unhealthy or almost more than once a week. In addition to the number is of poor mental health, the number of opioid related deaths has increased significantly from four in 2010 to 56 in 2020. from four in two thousand ten to fifty-six in two thousand twenty. This increase can be caused by many things, but often is due to mental health. Housing is one area where the indicators don't reflect the current situation in the region. This chart uses the two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty American Community Survey. So it just covers the beginning of the pandemic, indicates a surplus of low-income housing units and a deficit of moderate and middle-income housing units. But we know that since the pandemic started, housing prices have skyrocketed, and the data is not really accurate anymore. So we believe there is now a shortage of low, moderate, middle-income ranges. It also doesn't reflect housing quality, which is a huge issue for the region, especially among the lower-income units. So over the next couple of years, as we get newer data, we'll see how this changes. In the social environment, we have seen a significant decline in poverty. In two thousand fifteen, we were midway between the state and nation, had a rate close to ten percent. Since then, it has decreased to five point nine percent, dropping below the state level. This is fantastic news for the region. As a reminder, this may not really reflect the current situation from the pandemic. This only gets us through two thousand twenty, and it's a five-year average. According to some local social service organizations, poverty has gone back up. They're seeing more and more cases, so we'll have to see what the numbers do over the next few years. Another item that stood out in the social environment is the increase in families in distress. Since two thousand fifteen, the county has seen an increase in restraining orders from nine hundred and fifty-six to one thousand one hundred and sixty, twenty-one percent increase. We're still below the two thousand twelve value, but this is something we'll need to monitor moving forward. Another aspect of family distress is child requiring assistance filings. In the four years on record, the filings have seen a fifty-three percent increase, going from fifteen hundred filings to two thousand two hundred and seventy-seven filings in two thousand twenty-one. So again, something we're gonna have to pay some close attention to moving forward. All-sector finding is the disparities by race and ethnicity. In every dataset which we can see the breakdown by race, the disparities are evident, especially between white and black. In this chart, median household income, you can see that whites have a median household income of sixty-three thousand six hundred and fifty-one, while blacks have an income of twenty-seven thousand six hundred and eighty-three. Whites have seen a twenty percent, twenty-seven percent increase in ten years, while blacks have seen a thirteen percent decrease. This is not adjusted for inflation, which would cause the black median household income to see an even greater loss. What's also interesting is that the other races and ethnicities have seen increases that have moved from being closer to the black population to now being closer to the white population. Another example of this disparity is in poverty, with blacks having the highest percentage of individuals in poverty at thirty-one percent, while whites are at eight point four percent. All races and ethnicities have seen decreases, except for the black population, which has stayed stable. You will see in this chart a data glitch. The poverty rates by race in two thousand thirteen had issues. We've known about this for several years. So when you see a little glitch like that in two thousand thirteen, just ignore that year and look at the other years. A little while ago, the Berkshire chapter of the NAACP announced the report on redlining in Pittsfield. This chart helps support those findings. Seventy-two point five percent of white families own a home, while only twenty-eight point five percent of black families own a home. They've both seen an increase since two thousand ten, but there's a long way to go for blacks and other races and ethnicities to reach the homeownership of whites. So there's a lot of other data points that reflect these racial disparities, and you can check them all out online at Berkshire Benchmarks. One final thing, many of you may recall the discussions that occurred in two thousand fourteen and fifteen about the projected population loss. This loss would be due to structural issues in our age cohorts, a high percentage of baby boomers and a continued loss of young adults. So if you look at this chart, the young and middle-aged population, twenty-five to forty-four, you can see a stability that has not been there before. It's a very stable population, just over six thousand in that chart. We appear to have stopped that net loss of young adults. We will still lose some young adults, but they seem to be getting replaced now. We will also continue to lose population as the baby boomers and older Gen Xers pass, but the loss won't be as significant. We also have serious challenges with workforce hiring as baby boomers and Gen Xers retire. But overall, this is really new for their, for the region that we've, we've achieved some stability there. So in summary, we have seen successes and we must celebrate them, but we cannot stop working to continue to improve upon them. And we have challenges. The challenges are not unique to us, and there is a lot of work already happening to address them. We're a wonderful place to live for some of the population, but there's a good portion of the population that is really struggling. And to make it a good, a great county, a great place to live, we really need to work to make it healthier and more equitable for everyone. So now I'm going to switch my share and look at the new website. So this is a brand-new website, went live at the end of March at our big event at the Beck. There's only really a few things to do on the website, primarily looking at indicators and looking at data. You can view indicators, you can search for data, another place to view indicators, search for data. We also have the report repository, which I'll throw in a few minutes. And then we have announcements. This is where you can find the survey results, as well as the full state of the county report. So just go to berkshirebenchmarks.org. On the very bottom of, of that homepage, you can find both of these reports. Let's actually look at the report repository. This, we would love to see this grow and include a lot more reports. So we have the survey, which was just published today. We have grown a report on Great Barrington, the state of the county report, the SEDS update, local rapid recovery plans. You can search the reports by the agency or town that it applies to, sorted by topic, geography, and the year published. So hopefully, in the next year, we can really build this report repository to have reports from, from most of our communities and, and all the big regional initiatives that are happening. I'm gonna show you the data section now. And there's a couple of things to do in the data. You can see the library itself, which has a ton of data. You can look at one of our more popular topics, age, income, labor force, et cetera. Or you can look at a community profile. I think this may be especially interesting to many of you. So we have the county and the state, but we also have a link to all of our communities. I'm just gonna click a random one. Here's Lennox. And it'll take a second to load. But this will provide you with a lot of the data that you may need to know about your, your community. The total population, household income level, all of this is the latest data available. We are automatically reporting these when they get released. We have some basic demographics, so again, population, household, household size, family size, male and female ratio, and age distribution. You can see how it's down by generation. So you can see baby boomers and Lennox is the largest group, followed by M Z, millennials, and then Gen X. You have based in ethnicity breakdowns, households and families. We have housing units, owner and renter occupied, vacant housing and how much of that is second homes. And so you can see in Lennox, there's five hundred and five second homes. Home value, housing value by year, kind of what the median is. Sold off for mortgages, without a mortgage, rent, average single-family tax bill paid. There is a lot of data here, all on your community, so hopefully this will be really useful to all of you. Let me just briefly show you the, actually searching for data. So you can just view all topics. And we really tried to make this easier to use than the data clearinghouse on the old Berkshire Benchmarks website. So you can see there's a lot, a variety of larger topical areas. I'm just gonna pick one. The commuting. And then we have some subtopics, so let's see how many people drove alone. You can then look individually at Massachusetts, I'm at US, Massachusetts, or Berkshire County. Or you can aggregate towns together. So if you're looking at, you know, South County or North County, or some collection of communities, you can add them up and then look at the data, and it'll automatically aggregate it all for you. But it shows a little map showing those four communities color-coded. You can see Adams had the highest amount, and then the other ones are similar. Here it is, a bar chart, Adams, three thousand, Fisher, thirteen hundred, Beckett, eight fifty, Alfred, one point two. You also can see the aggregated region that you selected by year. So you can see the significant drop that occurred in two thousand twenty when the pandemic hit. People weren't driving as much to work. And then there's a table where you can download all the data. I'll point out, this really only works if you're using Chrome, otherwise you're gonna get this little error message up here. Not an error message, but a little note saying, please use Google Chrome to download the tat, the data. You can also edit the search, searches, start new search, et cetera. The final thing I wanna look at is the indicators. So this is really where a lot of the work went into. We have those nine sectors that we've talked about, and then go into the economy sector. And you can see the individual indicators that we've, that were chosen. You can see the survey results, and then you can see the current efforts. An effort, you can just expand and get a little bit of a description of what that organization or what that group is doing to help improve that sector. So you can find out what SEDS is doing to try and improve the regional economy, link to their website where you can find more. The survey results, there's a brief synopsis of the, or summary of the survey results for that question. Again, you can go into the full report and get the more detailed breakdown of that question. And then we have the indicators. There's a few things I want to go on the indicator. We choose a relatively simple one to start, gross domestic product. Not, not much to do here. It's just a line graph. We have the, the Berkshire County, Massachusetts, the US line. You can hover over these and you can see the values change. So you can see how the three geographies are going compared to each other. So this is a relatively simple indicator. So let me look at another one. I'm gonna do self-employed. Self-employed, a bit more you can do. Again, you start with Berkshire County, Massachusetts, the US line graph, but you can add a community. So I'm just gonna choose, say, Great Barrington. And now you can see a lot more self-employed in Great Barrington, or a higher percentage of the workforce than the, in the county or the state and nation. You can also look at it by, in a map. This map is color, color-coded by that percentage of the workforce. You can also change the year. So this is two thousand twenty. You can see the majority of, for the higher percentages of self-employed are in South County. But you can change that over time and see how that has been changing. And then one more item I wanna show you, I'll through that median household income. And this is, this is one of the more complex indicators to look at. There's a lot of items, a lot of work, things you can, with this indicator. Again, median household income has Berkshire County, Massachusetts in the US. You can add whatever town you're interested in to see how that compares. So you can see now I added Altman, and it's kind of similar to the Berkshire County and the US. We still have a map. Don't know why it's zoomed out there. So you can compare the map over time and see how that changes. But then you can also look at it by subgroup. And so this is items like age and race and ethnicity. So I'm gonna turn all these off for a second. And then I'm just gonna show you age. Now you have a chart showing within Berkshire County, median household income by the age of homeowner. You can see people forty-five, sixty-four tend to make the most in earnings, and then twenty-five, forty-four-year-olds, sixty-five pluses is lower. And then age under twenty-five is the lowest. So again, the working, those who tend to be working are, are making the most money, makes sense. So anyways, within Berkshire Benchmarks, there's a lot to look at on the website. I encourage all of you to take a look. So that was a lot to take in. If there's one takeaway, I would just say, go visit the website, download the state of the county report, take a brat, you know, browse it, might be some bedtime reading. If you're looking for data for your community, hop onto the, the data library or the indicators. And just think about how you and your community can really help to improve things from the county. So I'm gonna stop talking now. Any questions from anyone?
This is, this is Doug from Windsor. Mark, first of all, wow. I'm not surprised because I've worked with you before and, and you do incredible work. But I just wanna share an individual takeaway. Early in your presentation, you talk about two things that, for those of you who know me, are dear to my heart, educational performance and particularly young children. The two are, are different things that, that, I think the educational damage done by remote learning i- is going to be a blip. We, we're going to recover from that because we're gonna get, you know, kids back in school. My big concern is that we've lost some grounds. I, I work with Berkshire United Way and the Early Learning Challenge Grant funding money to, to get, you know, early childhood education looked at more seriously in Berkshire County. And we made a lot of progress in, in the, you know, two thousand eight to two thousand eighteen area. We looked at trauma and, you know, trauma-induced problems. We looked at and, you know, what they call ACEs, you know, e- early childhood negative experiences and so on. And we were doing a lot of positive work, and my concern is that the, the whole COVID thing has, has severely damaged the early childhood education community in Berkshire County. We, we've lost a lot of early childhood programs. Young families are having trouble finding, you know, quality early childhood education. So I think that we, as a planning commission, really have to take a, a deep dive into, to how that's gonna be corrected. And I mean, public schools are starting to add some stuff there, but Massachusetts being one of the leading educational states in the country is ranked in, in the forties of, near the lowest of our commitment to early childhood education. If we don't do that, if we don't take care of our youngest children, birth to age five, we've got a long-term problem. Sorry to, to lecture your event, but I, I, it came up in that data again, and thank you, Mark.
And, and I'll mention, Doug, there are a couple of indicators on early childhood enrollment. It wasn't showing much yet because a lot of this, you know, may end at twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. We're just not seeing that impact yet in the data. A lot of data, it may take a couple of years to really see the impact within, within these numbers. So it, you know, I've definitely had conversations about that very thing you, you mentioned, Doug. And it's something we'll be continuing to monitor going forward. Renee?
I just wanted to also thank you for this, Mark. I think for, it's really an overwhelming effort that you have presented to us tonight. And for someone who writes grants, I think you've made my job incredibly easier because there's so much data that I Because there's so much data that I can now find besides, you know, looking for it and then having to ask you for it. So I really appreciate all your work on this.
Thank you.
I just want to, I just want to make one observation. And so, you know, frequently Mark would get, or I would get, you know, questions from a, a number of different people about, well, I need this community profile or can you give me this number? And just, uh, was it yesterday or the day before Jim Brosnan from McCann? The superintendent up in McCann said, I, I need some other data, uh, to do my accreditation report. And I said, well, you should probably check out the benchmarks. And he came back with this incredibly positive response. It's all here, you know? So I would really encourage you, if you're going to, you know, do that kind of work to use this. I don't know, Mark, have you been able to track the, um, number of users on the website? Has it been increasing at all?
Been increasing a little bit, yeah. Um, we'll see over time how, how it works out, but I think it's around a, it's over a hundred a day that are using it right now. So.
You know, um, Tom, when we're talking about having a joint, uh, VRPC and Select Board Association meeting, we, we may want to tout this to the Select Board Association. I, the, the problem with select boards is unlike the VRPC board who has a lot of people who've been around for a long time, select boards have churn. And I know, you know, I have one year left on mine and then there's going to be new people coming in and I think a lot of the newer select board members in a lot of communities may not even know this exists.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you. I'll work with, um, Christine.
Okay. Any other questions for Mark? Okay. Thank you, Mark. Great job. And Mark did, uh, uh, our select board, we invited Mark up to Adams to grow this information, uh, about a month or two ago. And, uh, I want to thank him and thank Tom for, um, making his, uh, people available to, uh, reach out to our select board meetings or even planning board meetings for education topics. Just again, just work with Tom and, uh, see what, see what, uh, he can do. Tom, you are next. Executive Director's report.
Yeah. So for those who were at the executive committee meeting a little while ago, it's kind of a repeat, but I didn't, there wasn't that much that happened in between the one meeting and another. So, I'll just quickly go over this. I mean, I think, you know, there's, there has been a, a lot of press about, you know, passenger rail, uh, for those in the, the Pittsfield area, the Berkshire Flyer has got off to at least on its inaugural run, a, um, a, a very successful run. And for those up in North County or those interested in passenger rail, you can probably still log in to the Northern Tier Passenger Rail Study because there's a public meeting tonight. They're going to go over some of the existing conditions, uh, for that effort. And, you know, we had a little bit of the, this discussion before uh, the meeting formally started about the open meeting law. But as, and I, I have to check because this might be an ongoing situation. But as far as, as I know, you know, after tomorrow, that public meetings will need to be, um, in person. And there are a lot of things in play. Uh, there are several pieces of legislation that have been proposed. There are competing versions from the House and the, uh, the Senate. And so those need, those competing versions need to be reconciled. Uh, but if you're going to be having a, a public meeting, unless it, something fairly magical happens tomorrow, and as Roger likes to say, it can happen at 11:59 tomorrow night. You know, next week, uh, public meetings have to be in person. Unless, as Doug said earlier, you've adopted that provision, your town has adopted that provision where if you have a, a quorum present, other members of, of, again, participate remotely. That was the provision before COVID and that's what it reverts back to now.
Again, but for select words of three to five people, that means most of you can't be there. It, it, we, we adopted it wins because we had one person who occasionally was traveling on business and we adopted it so they could participate remotely when we were meeting even before this.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I don't know how many communities have adopted that, um, before, before this. And I, I'm remiss. I don't know what the adoption process is. It's relatively simple vote, isn't it, of the select board?
Yes. You just, you have to go on record of adopting the, the, uh, mass general law. We constantly, uh, our, our legal counsel, they told us, they, they, they worded it for us and we adopted it so that when, I won't name names, but our, our, our chair of the select would, would occasionally have to be out of town on, on business and wanted to participate. And if the two of us were there, we could have a meeting and she could vote and participate, uh, remotely.
Same situation for Adams.
Yeah. So you'll be able to do that after tomorrow if nothing else changes. Renee, did you have something in that regard?
Yeah, I know Sheffield, uh, we haven't looked at this for a long time, but the requirements of actually, um, doing this, um, require that every member have full access to everything that is at the meeting, including any documents that are brought into the meeting by a, a, a member of the public or any documents that are shared at the meeting. So there, we found it to be extremely onerous at that time when we last looked at this. Uh, because, uh, you've got to make this available. Uh, and if your packet, your select board packet changes at all, as well as the, the, uh, stuff that's available, you know, for the meeting, then you've got to figure out a way that everybody has access to it. So it's, I remember it as being complicated. So I'm just putting a caution out there.
Yeah, I, I would be interested in, in other opinions about remote participation. I mean, there was the editorial in the Eagle, I think, was it today or recently, yesterday maybe, that, um, said they weren't necessarily in favor of full remote participation. But what are some of the other, what, what do your other folks think? Because I've been, you know, uh, saying to our legislators that we should continue this on, but, um, I'm interested in, in other reactions.
I personally, Tom, love the, the ability to bring people in on a Zoom call. Uh, we found a lot of times that people that are very busy volunteering, uh, typically volunteer in different positions and sometimes they're running from job to job. And sometimes they have small children and it's just easier for them to work right out of their homes. There's, there's no downside disadvantage that I can see. I'm oftentimes asked as chair of different committees, if we could have a Zoom call because people just can't make it. And we don't want them to lose out and they're happy to participate. So I, I've, I've found the Zoom meetings to be fantastic. And also COVID is still, it's in this, it's big time in this community. So, you know, I like the safety precaution of it. I've got no problem being isolated as much as I love people. I'm, uh, enjoying the, the solitude.
Tom, this is Doug. I know I'm talking, that's not unusual. We are, we are trying to promote regionalization. And I'll, I'll give an example. I'm part of Windsor, Windsor is part of Wired West. We have six towns working collaboratively on a broadband initiative. And you're talking about, you know, City and Row and the bottom town all over Western Massachusetts. And to be able to have remote meetings means that people can get together more easily. No matter where we locate the meeting, somebody's driving more than an hour to get there. And I, I don't think people in Boston looking at this, think about that geographic thing. If we are trying to promote small towns getting together and share services where the select boards of the multiple towns or the other boards of the multiple towns are going to be trying to collaborate together. And you're talking about, you know, hour and a half or, you know, you know, two hour round trip commutes to be in person versus being able to do it remotely. It, it's, it's a game changer. And I think if we long term, there should be some provision for, if not select board meetings or local meetings, anything that is collaborative, uh, covering a larger geographical area and multiple communities should be allowed to, to meet, you know, remotely.
Well, I mean, that's an important point because, you know, the VRPC is subject to the open meeting law. So we will need to be starting to meet. And if there isn't a provision to allow, um, remote, I, I, would, would folks be interested to try to keep meeting remotely in some way, shape or form, uh, if we could? Because I, I mean, they might, as I said, uh, earlier or at a different meeting, the mayor of Springfield made some type of an executive order to allow remote meetings to continue. Now, I don't know if that's going to stand, but, um, if it does, maybe there's something that, that we can do as a commission to say, we want to keep meeting, you know, virtually. But is that so, something that folks would want to do?
Absolutely.
Most definitely.
Definitely.
And the point I was trying to make, Tom, saying that this is a countywide organization. It, it, I mean, I know Mohawk, uh, Woodlands is, is facing that and, and really worried about it. Because they're a huge geographic area. I think there's a difference between that and the city council of, of, of a city like Pittsfield or Springfield and can they get to a meeting?
Amanda, you wanted to, did you want to say something? You had your hand up?
Oh, yeah. No, I, I, I'm very.
Oh, you just muted.
I'm very much in favor of retaining the virtual option because, you know, being, being in a small community, um, you know, where we can have weather issues, the pandemic, as Barb pointed out, it's very much not over. We've had quite a spike uh, around, you know, in South County. I, I think it's a marvelous resource. Yeah. Um, and I'm supposed to, I need to go to a meeting in, in the village immediately after this. And it's fantastic because I can do both. So putting that out there. Thank you.
I think whatever, if we can, um, John, we're going to have to try to figure something out that will allow our meetings, at least that option. And maybe it is going to be hybrid for those who do want to, you know, come in. And, uh, we're, we're slowly getting better at hybrid meetings. And then the technology is, that we've installed is, is getting better. But, I mean, unless someone else has something else, I'll just continue with my, my report. The, the DLTA program is again, an important program for, you know, communities all over Massachusetts. That's still in limbo now with our legislature who has not been able to come up with a budget. It's part of the budget. Hopefully that gets resolved quickly. And then as a preview, and I talked about this a little bit with a description of the committees. Uh, the regional issues committee will be looking at a couple of items. Uh, the stretch energy building code, which is, you know, part of the, the green communities, which is really taking it to the next step in terms of, um, having an option, what, what's the terminology of a zero? A net zero specialized stretch code for cities and towns so that they can really, um, ramp up their, uh, energy, um, conservation measures. And then there is a clean energy and climate plan that the administration has, uh, proposed as well that they're seeking comments. So that'll be something that is on, on our horizon as well. And something not on the, um, not on my report that I, I'd forget to put in there. And it, it follows up with something that, that, um, was talked about, about education. There was a sep, a special commission on, uh, rural, uh, education that did just release their report with some, you know, I think pretty far reaching recommendations about rural school districts. And, um, I'll, I'll get that out for our next, um, you know, meetings. Cause you can have a link about that or you can, you can Google that too. It's the, uh, you know, Massachusetts Rural Commission, uh, Rural Commission on Education or, or that, that may get you there, uh, as well. That, that's it. That's all that I had, uh, John, unless there's some questions.
Hey, any, uh, final questions for Tom?
I have one quick question. Uh, we're, we're going to be meeting, uh, Monday with our new planning board. We added two new members and we're going to be assigning delegates and alternate delegates. And I was just curious, do I, who do I submit the, uh, the updates to?
Kate.
Kate, got it. Thanks, Kate.
And this is something that has slipped a little bit, uh, but we hope to get it back on track is we have been in other years, offering a, uh, what's called a citizen planner training collaborative, uh, training module for new planning board members. We, we do want to do that again. It, it just, we, we haven't been able to get that scheduled yet. So I know, uh, Kate has been tracking which towns have new board members. And we got a, we got a call from Otis and I think they have maybe three or all their whole board is new. And they're not, they don't have any institutional, uh, you know, knowledge or history. So we're going to try to get that scheduled as well. So stay tuned for that.
Okay. Anything else for Tom? Anything else, uh, anyone would like to bring up this evening? Okay. Well, let's have a motion and a second to adjourn. And, uh, we're going to make this a roll call vote this evening. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No move. So moved.
Okay. We have a motion and we have a second.
Second.
Okay. Roll, roll call vote.
John Paul?
Yes.
Peter Trob?
Yes.
Malcolm Fifth?
He left.
Yeah. Uh, Barb Davis Hassan?
Yes.
Laura Hadley. Um, Jonathan James?
Yes.
Sorry, Hoy. Yes. Nancy Socia?
Yes.
Amanda Hamilton?
Yes.
Kenneth Cutner?
Yes.
Doug McNally?
Yes.
Me too.
Oh, sorry, Sheila.
Okay, everyone, uh, have a good evening. Thank you.